Good evening, I'm going to call the November twenty fifth meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Manheim Township to order roll call, Mr. Bowman.
You should ever see us here. Commissioner Gifford. Commissioner Hoyer.
Here.
Vice President Bear.
Here.
President Brubin.
Here.
For Commissioners' press.
Thank you, and I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no announcements or changes to the agenda. And at this time, if there's any public comment that a resident or taxpayer would like to make on any of the agenda items, they're invited to do so. Seeing none, any online? Nope. Move on to the minutes, Commissioner Hoyer.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to approve the minutes of the November eleventh, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
Second.
Any comments or discussion on the minutes? Saying that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
The opposed? Minutes pass, okay, move on to the bills, Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Madam President, I move to approve the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four dispersment and to fund the appropriate account of dispersment. This month, total vendor payments equal eight hundred sixty eight thousand, I'm sorry, eight hundred sixty eight thousand, four hundred seventy six dollars and eighty six cents broken into the following funds. The general fund, seven hundred thirty thousand, five hundred ninety six dollars and sixty three cents. The stormwater fund, two thousand, five hundred forty two dollars and thirty four cents. The golf course fund, nineteen thousand, three hundred eighty three dollars and ninety three cents. The capital reserve fund, fifty eight thousand, six hundred sixty six dollars and ninety six cents. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund, three thousand, two hundred fifty seven dollars even. The Parks Capital Reserve Fund, three thousand, seven hundred, three thousand, seven hundred eighty three dollars even. The Highway Aid Fund, forty three thousand, three hundred sixty eight dollars even. Library Foundation Fund, six thousand, four hundred ninety one dollars even. And the escrow fund, three hundred eighty dollars even.
I believe you made the motion, I don't think we had a second.
Second. I actually forgot to do one more thing here. I'm sorry, checks larger than twenty five thousand, so we got three this month. First is to Alpha Space Control Company Incorporated, that's for traffic lines, crosswalks, and directional arrows. That's for forty three thousand, three sixty eight. The Intergovernmental Insurance Cooperative, that's for health, dental, and vision premiums, that's for three hundred twenty two thousand, five hundred one dollars and eighty nine cents. And lastly, Mankoo Gold, Pasher Fox LLP, that is for our city of Lexer Legal Services, and that's for sixty one thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and ninety cents.
All right, so the motion on the table, any further questions about the bills which will be paying? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. And now we're going to move on to the employee of the month.
Must be in the fire company, right?
Yeah, thanks.
Good evening Commissioners, first, thank you for this year's budget and all of our capital improvement projects have been completed in Fire Rescue as of last week, so we thank you for that continual support. And also, before we get into talk about our employee of the month, just your support for Fire Rescue and all the members that are here present tonight to support Lamar being recognized as the employee of the month. So it's always important to thank you publicly for what you do for us within Fire Rescue. So tonight, we're going to honor Lamar Souter. He's our fleet mechanic within Fire Rescue. You've heard over the last couple of months, the accolades that we have given Lamar nationally, being recognized by Firehouse Magazine as the United States Fleet Mechanic, Fire Apparatus Mechanic of the Year in the nation. But then we took it another step here locally, at the township, to be able to recognize him as the employee of the month. So he has ten years of service here at Manheim Township. Came from the private sector, which is one of the huge things within the workforce, of being able to pull good talent away and bring them into municipal government. So Lamar, we were able to bring him over ten years ago under Chief Kane at the time for the fleet program. But Lamar has also expanded that into other departments, and that's our common theme. As Lamar is our third Fire Rescue Employee of the Month. The other two are also in the room tonight that are previous recipients. All three work across all different departments and don't stay tunneled or siloed just within Fire Rescue. Our staff's very dynamic in that, and what Lamar has done really over this last year, and particularly, and why Chief Fisher's here to support him, is the police cars outfitting, upfitting. Lamar's doing that all in-house to help save dollars on the taxpayer. So instead of having like the police department send vehicles out, Lamar is also doing it internally to save costs. He's also working on vehicles in public works. And when they had the four new pickup trucks last year, Lamar did all the work to them. So it's really important that we highlight those good things that are happening across departments, ultimately saving taxpayer dollars. And it's a staff like Lamar who's never has his phone turned off. He's always here to support what we need in Fire Rescue, even after hours with the apparatus. And making sure the apparatus is running in the state it needs to be. So our staff that are riding the fire trucks can get out there when somebody dials nine one, has that emergency. So we're going to recognize Lamar Souter as the employee of the month from Fire Rescue.
We have a public hearing on stormwater, I'm sure you guys want to stay for that? They might be interested. All right, this is on a proposed ordinance, twenty twenty four dash eleven amendments, the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Sharon Young was here at the last meeting and gave us some background on what was going to be for us tonight, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. We've talked about this proposed ordinance several times over the last year or so, with a focus on the amendment of the ordinance to include a process for handling small mostly residential projects that currently require a full-blown stormwater management plan, regardless of what the square footage of the projects are, unless the properties happen to have an exemption. For example, a thousand-square-foot exemption left from what, from what they, what they had since nineteen ninety eight. So finally got everything pulled together to draft the ordinance to add a small project stormwater management plan process whereby that issue has been resolved. There are other things that we took advantage of this opportunity to amend though, so I just want to go through go through this ordinance, the enacting ordinance, just sort of item by item, if you bear with me, just so there's nothing that's been left out since we've been focusing on the small project. So the first, the first and primary amendment that's been meeting is being proposed is Article One, Section one oh nine of the ordinance, which has been the, basically the impervious credit and exemption section of the ordinance. Some of the sections that are existing now that are not being proposed to be changed are agricultural activities as defined by the ordinance, forest management and timber operations, domestic landscaping and vegetable gardening, conservation practices being implemented as part of a conservation plan. That's actually an addition, an additional exemption. There's, we are adding also installation of additional impervious coverage where impervious surface was accounted for in a recent subdivision or land development plan, so where there was extra above and beyond what was constructed, so for example, in a subdivision where, let's say, the stormwater management facilities were designed with an assumption of there being five thousand square feet of impervious surface on a lot. The house and associated amenities were constructed and they only took up five, four thousand square feet. There would be a thousand square feet left for them to utilize before they would need to do additional stormwater management. We've also added regulations pertaining to high tunnels. Back in twenty eighteen, legislation was enacted into law allowing high tunnels to be exempted from the requirement for stormwater management planning. So this, this language acknowledges that and sort of clarifies the township's position, or I should say the ordinance's position on that. And just make sure that there are some, there's some language here that, you know, that describes how that would work. And clarifies that impervious surface associated with that, for example, driveways, parking areas and so forth, would not be exempt from management of stormwater planning. And this, this particular language comes directly from ordinances that have been drafted by Bill Crosswell's office. They were very careful to make sure that that did not run afoul of the legislation that was enacted in twenty eighteen. And then the, the existing one thousand-square-foot exemption, which applies to properties that were improved as of the date of the enactment of the original stormwater ordinance, which was December fourteen, nineteen ninety eight, is being amended slightly just to add some mostly environmental clarifications, so that it's not just a blanket one thousand-square-foot amendment. We want to make sure that there isn't any kind of problems being created for downstream property owners that, you know, there still needs to be, you still need to have erosion and sediment controls in place while they're doing whatever the activities are. And the other thing that, that will change for that is that, is its connection with the new small project process, which I'll get into. And then the current exemption that pertains to what's currently activities on properties and only in the agricultural zoning district has been expanded to include any properties that are ten acres or more that are farmed, not just in the ag zoning district, where there's, you know, agricultural activities occurring. So this, or this has been cleaned up to comply more with what the county has drafted. There's a county model that this kind of hews more closely with, so exemptions that previously apply to properties from one to three acres or three to five acres are no longer there because there has, in order to be an agricultural property, or can be considered a farm, you have to have ten acres. So now, if you have a property, ten acres or more in size, you get the ten thousand-square-foot exemption, and again, it doesn't matter what zoning district you're in. And that would be for impervious surface being additional impervious surface, again, that's being added since December fourteen, nineteen ninety eight. That is associated with agricultural activity, so barns, covered manure management facilities, that sort of thing. And then the current ordinance has minimum distances between proposed impervious area and some sort of complicated distance or point downstream from that. We've simplified that to be just one hundred and twenty-five feet, but it'll be overland flow, so it is reduced, but it's it's, it's not something that goes into a stream channel or ditch or anything like that, so that was vetted by by the township engineer and by our in-house stormwater staff. There are some other things that were added, for example, no runoff should be directed toward, you know, animal management, waste management, that sort of thing, other sources of pollution, or pluton, I should say. Any exempted activities creating five thousand square feet or more of earth disserments need to submit an E and S plan. And again, we're talking about structures, not farming itself or conservation activities. That's really already required by Chapter one oh two, but we were just spelling that out. So those are the categories that are completely exempted from stormwater management requirements. For the more involved types of uses, so that would be impervious surface where there was a previous subdivision or land development plan, the high tunnels, the thousand-square-foot exemption where we need to evaluate what was done in the past and the agricultural exemptions. There, the applicants will need to complete the application form that's also being used for small projects so that we can make, just make sure that everything is satisfies the exemption requirement, so it's not even a plan, it's just, it's enough information so that we can, we can confirm that. And then small project stormwater management plans, so this will apply to qualifying projects that create new impervious surface coverage, no greater than two thousand square feet, again, since the date of enactment of the ordinance, December fourteen, nineteen ninety eight, and I should say that's cumulative, so if you're looking at a proper, a project, a property, I should say, that has that currently that one thousand-square-foot exemption, whether they've still got the entire exemption or a part of it left, whatever they have left is going to get added, it'll be a part of that, two thousand square feet, or I shouldn't say added, it's going to be a part of that. So they only get a total of two thousand square feet of ability to use a small project, it's not going to be a thousand square feet of exemption plus another two thousand square feet under the small project, because the small project is greatly simplified, doesn't have the same stormwater management criteria. You know.
Five hundred feet left, you get another fifteen.
You get fifteen hundred, right? And of course, for properties, that thousand-square-foot exemption only applies to properties that were improved prior to nineteen ninety eight. Everything since then doesn't have a thousand-square-foot exemption, so for everything since then, you get the two thousand square feet, you know, without that previous benefit of an exemption. There are, of course, criteria here too, so it isn't just a, you know, a blanket option, but generally, unless there's a reason why it appears that it would be problematic to use the small project process, applicants would be eligible to do that. The, again, the applicants will fill out that same application form and they will be submitting that in accordance with guidelines that will be provided to them, it'll be on our website, which will show them exactly how to calculate how much of whatever type of BMP they want to use, it's based on a very simple formula, how many square feet are you managing? Very, very simple, and that will tell them how much, you know, whatever size of, let's say, infiltration pit or infiltration trench they need to construct. The this is intended for residents in particular to be able to do this without the assistance of a professional consultant if they so choose. There's no escrow fee, escrow deposit, it's a flat fee. Our hope is to be able to manage this both from a plan review standpoint and inspection standpoint in-house. We're choosing simple BMPs that can be reviewed and inspected by township staff. If we have to use
BMP specimen.
I'm sorry, I should say stormwater facilities, right? I've inspected these things myself in the past, if they're, if they're pretty straightforward, it's, you know, mostly managed a situation where you're going out there with a tape measure or, you know, a wheel, a measuring wheel and, and checking dimensions and making sure that you know, some pretty straight, simple structural requirements are being met. There will be no financial security that needs to be posted. There is a simple template stormwater management agreement that needs to be recorded in order for us to still meet the requirements that DEP puts on us. They will just take that to the courthouse and record that before we issue the permit, the small project permit. So the cost to the applicants is dramatically reduced between the cost of having someone prepare a plan and the cost of having us review them post the financial security and so forth. Obviously, they can choose to have a consultant prepare this plan, but they don't have to. Can't be on the back of a napkin, but it, it's much, much simpler for, that we'll accept, as long as they have enough information for us to be able to tell what they're doing and that it'll comply with, with the requirements and and then there are some other sort of cleanup things associated that we were fixing, if you will, with this amendment. They added two definitions, one is development site, which basically just says the specific area of land where regulated activities in the township are planned, conducted, or maintained. There's reference to this term in the ordinance, but it's not a defined term. We've also added a definition of high tunnel, which probably bears reading, it's used in the course of agricultural operations, including production and preparation for market of crops, livestock, and livestock products, and the production, harvesting, storage, and preparation for market or use of agricultural, agronomic, horticultural, floricultural, silvicultural, hydroponic, and aquacultural crops and commodities, and the necessary accessory uses for packing, treating, or storing the produce and equipment. I believe that came straight out of the the legislation. And it's constructed consistent with all the following, it has a metal water plastic frame, when covered, has a plastic woven textile or other flexible covering, and has a floor made of soil, crushed stone, matting, pavers, or floating concrete slab. And then in the processing general requirements section of the ordinance, we've amended one of the sections to paragraphs to account for the new small project stormwater management process in the language. The paragraph explaining that some of the things that need to be shown on a plan in the existing features paragraph, it adds the term impacted to impacted floodplains, and this is going to go with our new floodplain, our floodplain ordinance amendment also, because what's happening, and again, for some reason, it seems like it's on a lot of residential properties, which puts a hardship on property owners, will have large properties where the floodplain is way far away from the proposed improvement, and often a very small backyard project, clearly does not impact you know, impact the property at all, but they're still required to show it on the plan and potentially do a study, so that's intended to address that. In section pertaining to plan contents, we cleaned up the language to remove the requirement to submit AutoCAD plan files on a CD. Again, another section was revised for the same reason, to remove reference to outdated SALDO plan submitted requirements, because it does refer to, refer back to the SALDO. Again, another section, plan procedure, we we revised to update or eliminate outdated plans and middle requirements. So this section pertaining to Board of Commissioner Review Process. As you know, currently, the board doesn't approve stormwater management plans, only modification requests. So this has been revised to have the Board of Commissioners now approve the stormwater management plans, not just the modifications. This is honestly best practice, it's the way all our municipalities I'm aware of do this. It doesn't change anything for the applicants, except that they need to add a certificate to the plan, it doesn't extend the timeframe for anything in the process, they already have to come to the Commissioners, because honestly, I've never seen a plan yet that doesn't need a modification of some sort, so it is really not going to be a change for them. It doesn't require them to go to the planning commissioner or anything like that. It really clears up a lot of confusion for people who don't work here often, they don't understand that they don't need to come here for stormwater plan approval. Again, in our section pertaining to methods of calculation runoff and floodplain delineation, again, the language has been added to say impacting the floodplain, not just floodplain. In the past, the stormwater ordinance had language that about stormwater drainage and access easements that prohibited placement of any structure, fill, landscaping, or vegetation in a stormwater management facility or drainage or access easement that would adversely affect the function of the facility or easement in any way. I believe this comes from DEP model language, because again, it's in every ordinance I've ever seen. And applicants come in and that's the note that's always on our plans, they think that's what it is. At some point, the stormwater ordinance was amended to remove that last qualifying sentence, but the result that it's a blanket prohibition, even in situations where it's unnecessarily restrictive. So again, talking with staff and the township engineer, we agreed to put that language back in there so that in situations where it clearly is not going to be detrimentally affecting the easement that they're able to, to do that. We also have a revision to the stormwater management agreement itself, we have a paragraph that requires that applicants deposit financial security for eighteen-month maintenance period of fifteen percent. And, you know, this is not required for anything not being dedicated to the township, so a couple of people pointed this out and objected, and so we've corrected this language because this only applies, as you know, like public streets that are being dedicated to the township. We've got a couple of certificates that have needed to be, had some language that was incorrect that went long unnoticed, I'm guessing that needed to be corrected. We added a certificate for board approval of the stormwater management plan. We deleted some of the appendices items because they're fluid. For example, plans and middle checklist changes from time to time. And it really should not be in the ordinance where it would need technically to be amended to, to change it. Same thing. With the application form itself, it really should not be in the ordinance because we do update it. So that is a summary of the, the ordinance itself.
Thank you for going through that.
Questions?
A lot of work. I think it's a work well done now. We've been waiting.
A long time. Yeah.
When did we start? Was it 21 or 20? When did we start doing this? I forget. When do we start the process? I know it's been talked about for a while.
I only started it in the spring.
Yeah. At least I have, yeah, been on a list, but we, we finally was on one list of ordinances when we came into office and wanted to get done. So that, this is great. Yeah. So anyone in the audience that has any questions? Nelson. Come on. No, I think you could just stand there. I think we're good.
Do you want my name and address for the record?
Sure.
Nelson Moore, 1651, right? Karen, thank you for your presentation. I really did like that you'd understand a lot of the stuff a lot better. So thank you. And I understand your intent of this is to really deal with the smaller applications in the situation. However, the original ordinance, excuse me, that is very pleasing. And you did reference it had a scale of number of acres in the, in the property in center.
Right.
You mentioned the 10,000 square feet. That all is basically the same or stays the same. Am I correct?
No. Right now, the, the ordinance, as you mentioned.
Let me clarify that. I'm specifically talking about 10,000 square feet, five acres or more.
It's 10 acres or more now, and that's consistent. Yeah, that's consistent. Yes. Yes. And that's also consistent with the the model ordinance that the county put out for small projects and exemptions several years ago. But I found that other counties and municipalities in other counties also use that standard, probably because that's the point at which a property is considered to be, you know, you have to have at least 10 acres to be considered a farm. I don't know if that state, well, there's a, there's a clean and green that is 10 acres, but I don't know whether that's sort of just become a standard around the state or, or. Yeah, it's just that it seems like that's where municipalities consider properties a farm if they're in ag use.
Really then, where, where I'm going with this is for the Irish farmer that has moved to 5 acres or 10 acres now, not much has changed.
That's right. Yes. The only, the only change, it's really clarifying that that exemption is for agricultural buildings. Basically anything that is, is going toward agricultural building. So if there was, there were other structures that were being added to the property that had nothing to do with the agricultural activities on the farm, they would not be, they would not be able to take advantage of that exemption.
I think that really addresses my concern and I was concerned about this changing. It's a little bit broad. In some situations, more work for the smaller than the current situation. But in all, it's also facilitated that without only the rural.
Right. You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Sandy Dacker, 28 acre value land for two acre value land and a small tract of land in Echo Valley. Glad to see that Nelson's here and because I have referred to my neighbors who are farmers and that this really needed to be run by them at the last meeting. I just have a couple of questions to understand this pragmatically for the moment. So am I being stating it correctly? That every property in Manheim Township, it's like a single family dwelling now has this two additional 2,000. And, and you can help me out with the language as an intent. So I don't mean to say every property, but.
So let's say, for example, your house, which was, the house was built before 1998. That would have, when the ordinance was adopted in 1998, been granted a 1,000 square foot exemption from doing a stormwater management plan. Those were, that was provided because there was no small projects. So you went from zero to 60. If you were doing anything without that exemption, you had to do a full blown stormwater management plan. So those thousand square feet, that was, that exemption was provided. So in your case, or anyone's case that was, that's in that same position, you would have gotten a thousand square feet of impervious surface coverage without doing anything. Correct. Or whatever's left over that they didn't use. If they did use nothing, they've got, they've got up to 2,000 in order to use the small project process. Absolutely. How many of what?
Applications or staff.
For. Well, we get, I can't even tell you how many dozens upon dozens upon dozens of inquiries. People don't do them though, because when they find out that they need to do a full blown stormwater management plan, there are a few that do them, but most of them turn, you know, just don't pursue them or, you know, I suppose it's possible that they do the project just without any permitting. It's, it's possible. We anticipate getting a lot of these.
Sure, I know a lot of experts have looked at this, but using Echo Valley, it's one of the more over engineered areas and it's probably very, it's the only one in township. And so people go back and find studies by the township and by the homeowners of the catchment that echo that way and determination of flood. So the water that's received and downstream effects. So we go back to that and we go up to some of those subdivisions where the example was 5,000 square feet. Right. Is kind of what might be planned for. And if the family didn't use, the builder didn't use all of that, then we got an extra thousand. We throw another 2,000 square feet of impervious. I'm just wondering if all of those up, meaning not just Echo Valley, but further the township. Upstream subdivision, subdivisions are that that stormwater planning is prepared for additional 40% of storm.
So just to be clear, and maybe I shouldn't have used the, the number of thousands because it may be confusing. There, it's not really an exemption. It's exemption for what the, what the property owner would want to do at that time. But the reason that they would get that is because in the course of that subdivision being built, and of course that would be newer ones. It would not be obviously prior to 1998. The stormwater management facilities would have been designed for much more stormwater or impervious coverage, I should say, on that property. They just didn't use it. So the stormwater management has, is already there. So it is being, it will be ma, it's already going to, going to be managed. So it's not that it's exempt. It's just that, and by the way, we have actually amazing records on this that have been tracked going way back and they continue to be tracked. So we know that, you know, that's the first thing that our zoning staff looks at, you know, is there anything left? That information has to get put on all the plans that get recorded for subdivisions. There's a chart that has all the square footages on each lot that are being managed by the design stormwater facilities. So that, that gets checked against what's been built. And then you know, okay, this is how much is left. Unfortunately, a lot of cases, there isn't much left, which is why you wind up with people who want to build small improvements in their backyard. But they'd have to do a, you know, a regular stormwater management plan because they don't have an exemption because their house is new.
So it's a place where a lot may already be overdeveloped. Too much impervious or awful lot of impervious. We're not going to allow them to put smart concrete down or encapable whatever. I'm sorry that that's a little vague, but we can think of smaller lot sizes and then people that exist in non-conform uses where very small lots have practically no yard and it's all impervious as it is. I'm thinking that this is not meant to be further or there has to be additional controls. That people will be able to use up all the green space on their particular lot.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by over, overdeveloped, but in the case again of the, you know, the recent subdivisions, obviously they're not going to be overdeveloped. There's also the zoning ordinance, which limits how much impervious surface you can have. So there's two things going on here. There's the stormwater ordinance, which regulates having to do stormwater management plans and installation of facilities. And then there's this, the zoning ordinance, which limits the amount of coverage you can have.
So section three of board plan procedure and development activities. Fourth. Approval of stormwater management plan by the township shall not be construed as an indication that the plan complies with the standards of any agency in the Commonwealth.
Right. In other words, they still need to get, for example, if necessary, an erosion and sediment control plan approved by the conservation district. If, for example, the area of disturbance is greater than 5,000 square feet, because that's the state law. It's extremely unlikely that they would have over an acre of earth disturbance and require an NPDS permit. But if that was the case, they would have to do that too, for example. It's, it's no different than any other approvals or plans that the commissioners approve. It does, but it's really, in this case, really it's, it's just frankly putting applicants, it's kind of a, a, you know, be aware because whether we say it or not, it's still a requirement of the state or the federal government or PennDOT or whoever.
And the township, I think that you guys have an incredibly difficult job. Need to have quite some difficulty. And so it's really hard to double back five years later, despite the excellent property records and trying to figure out what happened or didn't happen. I would just like to suggest that then we would also enact the procedure that when anything happens to add a building to a farm use property, that we would make sure that some of their other state department work would be in place specifically with the north management plan. And the, the spray way to that, I suppose, to use on that. Thank you.
I just want to add it. So I've heard a lot from constituents about this kind of thing. And, and we were getting requests over the years. It's just really an affordability thing for, for people to, they want to do small projects, but it's just an arm and a leg to, you know, get the engineering and everything else that goes along with it in the time process. So I think for a lot of folks, this is a huge, it'd be a benefit for taxpayers here that, you know, the one to small projects that maybe couldn't afford it otherwise to be able to do it because we're overly onerous maybe and some are, are pass procedures. So that's all it really is. Yeah.
I am generally in favor of it. It's just, it's very hard to write an ordinance for all the contingencies. But I knew we'll live, hopefully, thinking we need every last bit of it through. And not creating situations that if there were other people in the meeting this evening, we set ourselves up and then kind of that was to hear the township just look at it therefore.
Believe me, this has been looked over, looked over, looked over, looked over, looked over. And, and big part of the reason for that is because it's a balancing act. We don't want to be burdensome on our residents and that's been the case all these years. By the same token, we want to make sure that downstream property owners, the environment, the water quality, et cetera, are protected. So that's why we've established the limit at 2,000 square feet and not a much larger limitation. And, and remember, it's not that it's not being managed at all. It's just a, it's just more simplified type of stormwater management.
I think that came up with that 10 number for farm based on the right format. That's where we came up with that. But within the township, even though there are no longer, I guess, time to enjoy this, we have a lot of not existing non-conform uses. And so I think that lends diversity to Manheim Township, but that will help to keep those properties and maintain themselves to not use the farm anymore. Thank you.
Nelson.
Just for my own information, sure. With the downsizing of the lots to the point where the house occupies a substantial portion of the lot today, what flexibility that this ordinance gives those people where, you know, you practically don't have enough room between the, the two existing houses to put anything. And this ordinance is more applicable to houses built, I'm going to say up to maybe 2,000, 2,010, I think. Versus what we're, we've seen no.
It is definitely a challenge for those properties and those property owners. And this, this process may, may only be able to help them to a point because it isn't just, it isn't just the process there. It's also that increasingly those properties are burdened by all kinds of stormwater easements and things like that. So there just even isn't a place to put those improvements, never mind the stormwater management process involved. Yeah.
Sometimes they're planning communities or condos too, so they're not, don't really necessarily own the dirt on which the structure is set. That comes up a lot too.
It does, but we have more and more and more. And I believe we're going to be getting more properties that are on small lots and, and the houses are just as big as they can possibly be to the setback lines and, and still meet the impervious surface limitations. And, and unfortunately, you know, your average homeowner doesn't realize, even though they're shown all the paperwork, they still just don't realize what the encumbrances mean until they go to put something on their property and then they find out. It's very common, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Okay, so we can take a motion to close this hearing. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the hearing's been closed. Then I think it comes up later in our agenda here as to whether you want to act on it today. Mr. Bowman, do you have a manager's report tonight?
I do. All right. Lancaster program, as the commissioners are well aware, we've been working cooperatively with the city on the Bike at Lancaster program. And as of just the last two weeks, we have three Bike at Lancaster sites now in Manheim Township. They're all fully installed and available for use. They are located on Martha Avenue in front of the new Stelly Mill Apartments at Stauffer Park, at the Marshall Avenue parking lot. And that one will be moved here within the next couple of days into a dedicated pad that's being poured at that site. And then the Foundry Apartments on Manheim Pike. So that whole southern stretch east to west along this corridor. So those are the three locations as they exist. So those are the three locations as they exist. Uh, and you can see on the two slides, left and right. Um, there are a combination of bikes within these racks, some from the city and some from the township. You can see the township logo on the on the baskets on the front. Um, that tells you the difference. The red logo is the city and the white and blue is township. So these are pictures that were taken end of last week. So we're already seeing a a good amount of use uh, of the bikes at these locations. So kiosks uh, provide clear pricing, um, explain how to uh, how to use the app, how to locate bike stations, um, QR codes uh, in order to to pay. Uh, and they've already been rented and seen again, as I mentioned earlier, throughout the township. Um, we're working right now and putting a uh, a pad in a J C park for the next round. Um, there will be, I think, another three or four years worth of uh, of bike share locations that are going to extend into township uh, uh, over the next couple of years. Uh, Overlook Campus, uh, the disc golf, uh, the back nine uh, of our disc golf course uh, has been completed as of last week. So the front nine was completed in twenty twenty three, and now the back nine has been completed with signage. Uh, these pictures, I actually took them this morning. Um, so we have a full eighteen holes now uh, of our disc golf course. Here you can see a hole number, uh, that's hole number ten on the left, hole number eleven on the right. And then all the baskets in that eighteen hole disc golf course have been uh, upgraded with new flags and new uh, new signage. So everything there is done, there is wayfinding signage and uh, and uh, all kinds of graphics throughout the course that have been completely upgraded for those eighteen holes. So that project now is uh, it's been talked about for quite a, quite a long time, and now we've seen it completed. And one last topic, uh, suspending municipal trust is our uh, workers' comp carrier. Uh, Maribel does a good job of managing that from the H R office. Uh, we receive a refund typically annually on premiums uh, for good performance. And uh, just last week, we got a return of a hundred thirty seven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and forty two cents uh, for that uh, performance uh, with the trust. That is it.
All right, thank you. Good news. All right, uh, next we're going to appoint Michael Chabot to, from the Planning Commission as the representative of the Planning Commission on the comp. And Commissioner Hoyer, do you want to make that resolution?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to appoint Michael Chabot as the Planning Commission representative on the Comprehensive Plan Committee until the adoption of the updated comprehensive plan.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, are there any uh, Commissioner liaison reports this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, as a Commissioner liaison of the Menchon Township Public Library Foundation. Uh, I just bring in the thankfulness of the library. About the, the new three appointees. Uh, Mrs. Janet Carroll, Beth Crosby, and Susan Robertson. And also, uh, they uh, remind that that they will need two more for next year, twenty twenty five. Uh, when the two current board members aspire. And and one more point, the Menchon Township Public Library Foundation has passed a motion to transfer ten thousand dollars for library operations. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoyer.
Um, Carol Gifford and I um, hosted the coffee with commissioner. And the main topic was the, again, the um, uh, Bible College dumping the stuff there, and also they, there was concern about um, trucks going past the pickup line. They said that that's, um, they they, you know, the parents are parked there and kids are coming in and out. And the construction vehicles are coming past at a pretty good speed. Um, they were wondering if we could maybe put up some signage or something I, you know.
So I know that, um, I I can't remember the company that's doing, providing the trucking work. Um, Manager Kane's already contacted them.
Okay.
Talked to them about maintaining their speed on on, it's a public road, so we we can't restrict use of the road. But I know he's talked to them about making sure that the drivers are following speed limits there.
So there couldn't be any limitations on when they can, like, time of day, like, pick up and drop off?
I I think that there's a public street that goes back to to Centontra.
Yeah.
And then I I don't, I wasn't at the meeting, but I know that to pick up and drop off, I believe there's a a pull off, so.
Yeah.
Um, with respect to that that road, I don't, I don't, I don't have any right to restrict that use.
Okay.
Um, but they, they have, the company has been contact, it's a local company, I don't like.
Yeah, yeah.
Who was that?
J D.
Okay, yeah. So I know that, um.
And then, of course, the lights and noise issue came up. So that was like the topic at the time, hour and a half that we were there, was pretty much that was the topic.
Yeah, it's last time I was there too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner. Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Under new business, uh, we have a consent agenda. Uh, Commissioner Messiah.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve all items in the consent agenda, which consists of one station of time request.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, mission passes. We have an ordinance um, for posting the twenty five mile per hour speed limit on Chrome Avenue and removing a handicap parking in front of seven twenty four Skyline Drive. Commissioner Fair.
Thank you. Um, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, providing for additions to schedule one A speed limits, which is contained in the code of the township of Manheim. Section four eighty dash fifty nine, as referred to in section four eighty dash eight, and authorizing the removal of a handicap warning sign from uh, schedule two D, um, which is contained in section four eighty dash seventy five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
That ordinance is passed. Um, so the next ordinance to consider is ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven, which Ms. Young went over with us earlier, we've been hearing on amended stormwater management ordinances. Uh, anyone want to make a motion on that? Commissioner Messiah.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four uh, eleven to amend meant the stormwater management ordinance of Menchon Township twenty eighteen as amended to vice article one, section one oh nine, stormwater impervious credit and exceptions. Article two definitions, article three, plan requirements, operation and maintenance of facilities and figure its stormwater management agreement and declaration of easement and to delete figures eleven, stormwater management plan checklist and twelve application for consideration and stormwater management plan.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Sorry.
Okay. Um, any discussion on uh, this ordinance? Any questions? Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance passes. Thanks for your work, I'm. Uh, uh, Commissioner Hoyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to award the bid for snow removal equipment rental to the apparent low bidder, B R Kreider Incorporated, for various remaining equipment not previously bid on in accordance with intermunicipal memorandum from Bill Sowers, Director of Public Works, dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
So, thanks. Um, any discussion on this bid award? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is awarded, uh, with no acknowledgements. Is there any correspondence or petitions?
Okay.
So at this point, if there's um, any resident or taxpayer that would like to comment on matters concerning the township, you're invited to do so. And in the audience, anyone on Zoom? Okay, none this evening. I can take a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next.